All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting, City of Garden City. This is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, Thursday, February 11, 2021. And I'd like, like to now call the meeting to order with everyone first rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh. Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls.
Mr. Walls called me, he's absent and excused.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Okay, now we need approval of the agenda, if someone would care to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I just wanted to inform you that Mr. Kanda, the applicant for the first item on the agenda, he's also trying to log in. He was just sent the digital login email, so I was wondering if it's possible to switch around one and two.
Yeah, that would be fine, if someone would make a motion to approve with that change.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. All in favor, or would the secretary take the roll, please?
Mr. Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Mr. Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, approval of minutes, a regular meeting, January 14, 2021. We need a motion.
I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 14 meeting.
Support.
Motion's made and supported to approve minutes from January 14, 2021, any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Mr. Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item is public comments on non-agenda items only. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on an item not on the agenda? If so, indicate that you'd like to speak. Do we? Do we have anyone, Brian?
No hands.
Okay, moving on then to business items. We're moving to the number two item, which is PC number 21-001, request for special land use recommendation and site plan approval to establish a carryout restaurant at 211 and 27 Inxter Road in the C1 local business district. And we're having a public hearing on that. We'll start out with the special special land use. Could we have the presentation from Mr. Ortega?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to consider the application for a carryout restaurant. This is at 211 and 217 Inxter Road. This is on the west side of Inxter Road, south of Catherine, but technically it's also north of Cherry Hill. Be more familiar with everyone. The buildings in this location are all attached, however, this particular property, as shown on the aerial photo, is only involving one building that is approximately 3,000, 2,923 square feet in area. And the two northern units are currently vacant, while the two southern units are occupied by two, by an office. It's the Liberty Tax Preparation Office, and actually a retailer, it's GBH style, it's a, it's a clothing store. So the applicant is proposing to utilize the two units on the north to operate a vitamin juice and a fruit juice carryout restaurant. This would occupy about 1,560 square feet in those two units. Now, based on the definitions in the C1 zoning district, technically, carryout restaurants require special use approval. This block along Inxter Road, the entire block is zone C1. So with regards to special use, the first thing we look at is compatibility with the adjacent uses. You know, the Inxter Road corridor is primarily a commercial corridor with, they did, there are some intermittent single-family residences in this block are all commercial uses. To the, to the east, you know, as a city of Dearborn Heights, but that's also commercial uses on that side of Inxter. To the south are both Wendy's and the other retailer in the area. To the north are other vacant and occupied commercial units, and then to the west are one-story apartments. But the majority of care of the corridor is zoned, C2, C3, or office. And in addition, the residents that exist, that exist to the west, you know, they're basically aware of the fact that, I mean, Inxter Road's commercial nature, and I would, I would venture to say they understand the commercial nature of their neighborhoods and the need to operate in a compatible manner. So the change in use to a carryout restaurant, you know, we don't believe is going to be a significant increase in activity on the site. You know, customers that visit a carryout restaurant typically stay for a minimal amount of time. They're there to pick up their item and leave. It's not envisioned to be having any kind of permanent seating, it's going to function as a carryout restaurant. So given the site's minimal change in use, and the fact that this is a long-established commercial corridor, we believe that proposed use would fit in and be compatible with the adjacent existing uses. You also have to consider compatibility with the master plan, this area's zone, excuse me, planned neighborhood commercial. And so the development of the site for a carryout restaurant would offer residents, you know, in the adjacent neighborhood, convenient access to a brand-new food service provider. And once again, given the low intensity of this proposed use and its general consistency with description of a neighborhood commercial use that's envisioned in the master plan, providing services to residents, we believe the proposed use would be compatible with the city's master plan. Technically, the zoning ordinance doesn't have any specific requirements for carryout restaurants, so that does not have to be considered. But we do look at the use of the adjacent property to make sure that any special use will not interfere with the use or enjoyment of adjacent property. As you, as I've mentioned, to the north and south and east are existing commercial businesses that the proposed use would not interfere with their operation. We believe because they all exist in a commercial environment and harmoniously with each other of the same character and style. And then, once again, the adjacent property to the west is occupied by the apartments and the site. This current site already provides the zoning ordinance required six-foot-high masonry wall along that shared property line. In addition, you know, the, the building itself, all the activity in and out of the building for my customers is going to be on the east side, separated from residents by the building itself, masonry wall, and then the other businesses, I mean, then the apartments are located to the west of that. So, given this configuration, we don't believe that the activities will be, will interfere with the use of this adjacent property, it's, it's a, it's a well-known configuration. Other things to consider that, that really don't impact this, this use is the fact that the services, you know, this is already an existing building, it's already serviced by public utilities, so therefore it should be continued to provide service, the, a carryout restaurant would have an extended amount of demand for any type of other utilities. The site already is configured for passenger vehicle traffic, and plus it's located on Inxter Road, one of our primary corridors, so it should have enough traffic volume to easily handle any, any additional traffic. And one of the last points I want to make with regard to special use is that technically you consider enhancement of the surrounding environment by the special use. You know, the issue is the site is completely occupied by the existing building and the parking lot, and there is really no area provided for landscaping. This is just a fact of the commercial lots along Inxter Road. You know, they have very limited depth, and so the area is barely enough for the building floor area and a functional parking lot that has one drive aisle. So the only area really for enhancement really exists in Inxter Road right-of-way, and that's under Wayne County Road Commission jurisdiction, so we have, you know, limited opportunities to enhance that. And the, and the private property owner really doesn't have the opportunity to provide landscaping in the right-of-way, that's the jurisdiction of Wayne County, as I mentioned. So there's very limited opportunities to enhance the actual environment. So in the end, when it comes to the actual special use, we would recommend that the planning commission approve the carryout restaurant special land use based on the fact that the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent uses. Proposed use is compatible with the master plan and the future land use designation, and the fact that the proposed use, we don't believe will interfere with the use of adjacent property. So, Mr. Chair, that's the end of my site, special use comments, and if we want to deal with site plans separately, I can take any questions on special use at this time.
Yeah, why don't we finish up special use and then we can move on? Does anyone have any comments or questions about the special use application?
Um, I have one on the landscaping. Um, yeah, would it be possible, rather than permanent plantings, to put a couple of large potted plants out there? I mean, some kind of a maybe two-foot tall, two-foot diameter pot with a shrub in it and put two or three of those out there, just so we can break up that austerity just a little bit?
Where would we put that?
Is there any, I don't recall, I went over there, but I wasn't looking for that. Is there any green belt at all between the parking lot and the street?
Unfortunately not, right now, because of the minimal lot depth of the, all these uses, and it go, it's a, it's a problem up and down Inxter.
Yeah.
Are the sidewalk surface is directly adjacent to the parking lot drive aisles. So we're having issues with, you know, cars backing up into the sidewalk as it is, unfortunately. So really, just as a side note, an issue with this corridor. But that green space between the curb, the curb of the travel lane and the edge of the sidewalk, that's a pretty big area, and if Wayne County allowed us, you know, the sidewalk could be shifted to the to the east, and then that green space could be reconfigured to provide a curb, so that way there's a solid curb and then landscaping existing the right-of-way. I believe it's, I believe the Al Sutan Restaurant to the north does have some shrubs, but I do believe that's located technically in the Wayne County right-of-way. I can check and verify right now, but.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We're kind of, kind of.
Yeah, that, that seems like it's putting quite a financial burden on them, asking them to move the sidewalk, and then, then it wouldn't be in line with the rest of the the sidewalks in that area, so.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw then, so. That'll have to remain looking how it looks, I believe. Okay.
Does anyone else have a comment or question?
No.
Oh, well, we could use a motion to recommend approval to the council pending site plan approval.
Mr. Chair, just a point of information, we probably should open the public hearing for any potential, any comments.
Okay. Uh, is there is there anyone wishing to comment in the general public?
I don't see any hands as of now.
Okay, well, if we have no hands up, no one wishes to comment, we can close the public hearing for the special land use section, and I'm open to motion.
I'll make a motion.
That would be to recommend.
Make a motion to approve and send this to council.
Would be recommending approval for the council.
Recommended approve, recommending approval and sending to council.
Support.
Pending, pending site plan approval.
Yes.
Okay. There's support?
Yes.
I got support from Eric.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Secretary take roll, please.
Commissioner Steenberg. Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the site plan review. Mr. Ortega, would you care to continue with the site plan?
Yes, um. So you do have a site plan that was included by the applicant in your packet. Get to it. So with regard to site plan issues, you know, it's a, as I mentioned that you, well, we already dealt with the use issue. The site plan provided appears to provide the property's dimensions, but it doesn't show the actual property lines, so we do, the, the site plan will have to be revised to show the accurate location of the property lines in relation to the use in the building. When it comes to the building, and in and of itself, you know, it's a typical, you know, late 20th century commercial architecture with brick columns and, and large windows. And the, so there's no proposed changes, when, when speaking to the applicant for any elevation, significant improvement of the structure would be replacement of the older sign boxes and possibly reduction of the number of window signs. That's my initial look at anything that could be improved with this proposed addition, proposed use. This is, we only can, are looking at right now, the 3,000 square foot building and its associated lot. We have to look at the parking for all uses in the building, you know, being, being serviced by these eight parking. This is, this is, for us, this is a little interesting, because this is the first time we get to utilize our shared parking requirements. This is a little bit different than before, because we recently adopted these shared parking standards for this type of configuration. Take each use in the building, their, take their minimum required parking standard and multiply the percentages in the, in the chart and the ordinance based on the time period, on different time periods, as that, you know, offices are open, are utilizing their parking spaces more towards, you know, the center, middle of the day. Restaurants and other uses might use things towards later in the day, so these percentages through the industry stand, through the industry experience. So we go modified requirement for each time period, basically the, the time period that is, has the most demand is the, is the time period with the minimum requirement for the entire property. So based on the office use and our standards, the personal service and retail, it's the same standards, and then the carryout restaurant standards. They are required under our normal ordinance, each individually would require, you have 10 parking spaces, but actually based on the shared parking requirement, they only need to provide.
Clear place.
So the eight parking spaces are the minimum required for shared parking, and they actually provide eight parking spaces on site. Now, the one caveat to this is that the carryout restaurant is envisioned with discussions of the applicant to have two employees and only 400 square feet in their building for the customer waiting area. So it'll be, so we would need to confirm with the applicant that the total amount of area in the building dedicated for customer wait. So, and moving on, the other issues with regards to the site plan. The site plan itself actually doesn't have, provide any details for the lighting on-site, so a revised site plan will be required to provide the location height and fixture type of the lighting. In addition, as we just discussed earlier, the landscaping, there's no real opportunity for that, so the land, the planning commission would just have to determine if any landscaping should be provided. And then finally, once again, because of the size of the site, there's no trash dumpster enclosure or trash handled directly on the property. So the applicant must indicate how trash removal will be handled, will it be all conducted with rollaway dumpsters located in the building? Technically, to the north of the entire site, on the neighborhood, there is one dumpster, but for the applicant to use it, they need to provide a dumpster sharing agreement with that other property owner, so we just need to have that detailed information. So with, based on that information, that analysis, we would recommend the planning patient grant and the site plan approval, but contingent upon the applicant addressing those issues, providing a revised site plan, showing the property lines, confirming the number of employees and the customer waiting area size of the restaurant, and then revising the site plan for the lighting details and addressing trash removal. And I do believe the applicant is in our in the, in the audience, believe it's Mr. Alex Ali and possibly several others on his team, if you want to ask them questions.
Okay, do they, would they like to make any comments or statements before, while, before we consider it during the public hearing? This would be a good time for them to to comment if they have anything they'd like to say.
Or make their presentation.
I got a hand from Ali. Ali, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sir, if you'd like to make a presentation or have any comments on the application.
I will respond to the questions he asked about the garbage.
Yes.
We will, we will have the sharing agreement with the next door buildings for the trash. That's even for this, for the health department also, this is what's requested.
Okay, and you're going to have that agreement in writing?
Yes, we will have it written.
Very good. Was there anything else you wanted to comment about?
Yeah, but the employees, we're going to have, you know, two, two, three people working. And I'm trying, you know, next door, there is a big parking lot, it's always been empty, I'm trying to communicate with the owner if we can rent or lease parking space in their parking lots. If that will happen, it will make it so much easier for us regarding the parking lot. And for the customers and everything, and our other locations, most of the customers, they place their orders online and they just come in, walk and take it out, because they pay in the app, we have our own app. Most of the customers, our customers, they buy from the app and they pay in the app, they just walk in, take it and go. And also, like, a third, you know, a big, a big percentage of ourselves, they go through DoorDash and Uber Eats, which is their delivery system. They just come in and take it and go.
What are, what are going to be your hours of operation?
We, right now, the hours of operation that I have in other locations is between 10 hours and 11 hours. Probably this one will be the same, unless that is, you know, a bigger man, a larger demand for us to be open longer. But I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment during the public hearing? Brian, do you have any hands?
No other hands right now.
Okay, I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to comment during the public hearing? Do we still see none?
Still none.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing at about 7:21. And open it up to comments from the commission. Does do any of the other commissioners have a comment or question?
Nothing here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I would suggest that we approve based on the recommendations of the of Mr. Ortega and McKenna and Associates, but do it conditionally pending approval of the four items listed in the site plan review. And then possibly we could have that handled administratively.
Chairperson May?
Yes.
I do have a, a hand up now, Alex, I believe is the applicant, one of the applicants on the paperwork. If we want to allow him to talk.
Oh, sure. Before we, before we have a motion, you can speak.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, there is enough room on the, on the north side of the building if we need any additional parking, I'm the owner of the property. And I'm buying the next door, the little strip, so you know, we don't have to have a special agreement, because I'm going to be owner, we should have a closing tomorrow.
Well, that's going to have to be reviewed by Mr. Ortega to.
I mean, we can increase the size of the dumpster if we need to. I think a six-yard, we can go to eight-yard.
Well, what we need, what we need, excuse me, what we need is a sharing agreement for the dumpster.
Okay, we can do that.
Yes, we need, we need to have that in writing.
Okay.
We need to have the site plan revived to accurately show the property lines.
Okay.
And on, on the application, it should confirm the number of employees and the, make sure the customer waiting area is appropriate for the restaurant in order to meet the minimum parking spaces.
That's fine.
We also need some details about the lighting, which you can probably handle with Mr. Ortega and the building department.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
No, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Does the commission have any other comments or questions?
Nothing here.
No.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve and send to council for approval. Citing the four.
This one we approve, the. The other one goes, the special land use goes to council for approval.
Okay. I would like to approve, I motion to approve this one. With the four things that are listed. And, and Mario's uh, handle those administratively.
And support it, okay, and. Is that uh. Okay with uh, Mr. Ortega? To handle that administratively?
Uh, yes, absolutely, we can uh. Those four items can, I can have the applicant submit a revised site plan and make sure it meets all the conditions of the planning commission like to see.
Also, also can it be noted on the site plan if he does close on that additional property? It should show on the site plan?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't wanna goes to any parking spots, let's make sure that it's all recorded.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and uh, support. Any uh, comments on the motion? When secretary take your role, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Hi.
Commissioner Kalivas?
Hi.
Commissioner Mativier?
Hi.
Mr. Steenberg?
Hi.
Chairperson may.
Hi. Okay, the site plan is approved, uh, contend, pardon me, contention on the uh, four items. And uh, Mr. Ortega will handle that administratively. Uh. Gentlemen, your next uh. Step is to. Get approval from the uh, city consul. For their, for your uh, special land use. And uh, we've recommended that they do that, so uh. Soon as that happens, then you can proceed with Mr. Ortega. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item of business. Is the uh. Request for special land use recommendation and site plan approval. To establish the hobby shop with an outdoor RC race course at. Sixty-three thirty-two Middle Belt Road. In the C two community business district. Uh, this needs to be removed from table to consider, uh, do we need a motion to remove it from the table?
Um, yes, you, you could make a motion to uh, to remove from table and resume discussion.
Would someone like to do that?
You know, so I'll make a motion to remove the tabling motion. Support or.
Uh, would you take your role, please?
Mr. Steenberg?
Hi.
Mr. Mativier?
Hi.
Commissioner Kalivas?
Hi.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Hi.
Chairperson may.
Hi. Okay, uh. Mr. Ortega, would you like to begin with this?
Uh, yes. Uh, good evening, everyone, for uh. For the public, uh, it might uh. Be interested in, in this issue. What we're here toward tonight is uh. As proposed, as, as mentioned. The applicant is uh, interested in you re, re-use, I, reutilizing. Um, six-three-three-two Middle Belt, this was commonly known as the Maplewood lumber site. And the applicant is proposing to create, uh, to. Uh, operate a retail hobby shop uh, in a retail warehouse along with an indoor racetrack uh, for remote control cars. That would be low than the uh, building that has direct frontage onto Middle Belt. In addition, the revised site plan in front of you now indicates that the uh. One-story uh, warehouse-type structure uh, to the east of the uh. Fronted, front building is actually proposed identified as a warehouse with a future indoor racetrack. So when it comes to uh, the, and then in addition to that, behind, excuse me, to the east of that structure. Is propose an outdoor uh, RC off-road course. And then the building, the lots, the south. Are proposed uh, to be used for a uh, both lots to be used for a parking lot. And the original application did indicate that um. It would be a dual use and for passenger vehicle parking and as an asphalt uh, race course. That was on the original application. So this application requires uh, site, a spe- special land use review and approval, and then in addition to site plan. And the commission already held a public hearing, so this is a continuation of the issue because the applicant has provided a revised site plan. But in the end, the issue with, that was discussed most uh. In detail was the uh, compatibility issues that this particular use might have with the adjacent properties. The north is a high school, to the south, in the west are commercial businesses, but to the east is an existing single-family home that begins. Uh, with uh, the residential, single-family neighborhood, larger neighborhood to the east. So the applicant, uh, the planning commission provided him, provided him with some. Recommendations and how to ensure compatibility, the applicant's revised site plan uh, shows now a masonry wall. Uh, in accordance with the minimums, uh, the ordinance, zoning ordinance along the um. Hundred fifty-foot uh, rear property line adjacent to the single-family home. And then our revities are proposed along the interior of that wall. The specifics of the size and the, and the number hasn't been provided at this time. Then the applicant's revised site plan also shows a um. Six-foot-high synthetic resin fence along Maplewood right away. Uh, it's mainly ju- and it's just showing the fence along there, so no screening is actually shown. Along the southern side that shared with a commercial zone property and um. Or. The um, the rear lot line on the outside with the uh, single-family home or the office use. The applicant has noted that the uh, outdoor track will be utilized from nine AM to dusk. So it's not apparently, it's not envisioned to be a nighttime operation. So some improvements have been made in terms of trying to provide additional screening for the use. But it does appear that there could be additional screening provided in terms of landscaping. Along the fence rows, not only to deal, potentially deal with sound issues, but also to make it aesthetically pleasing along the Maplewood side. And once again, just a point of information, the, the RC cars that are being proposed are, are electric cars, they're not proposed to be uh, the, any of this liquid fuel-based cars, which tend to provide. More, create more noise. In the end, uh, the applicant, uh, if operating would have to abide by the noise regulations of the city, which have a specific decibel level. In uh. For the adjacent residences. A level that can't be exceeded. So, once again, compatibility with the adjacent uses is, is, is a very key issue, some revisions have been made. Um, but it would be up to the planning commission to determine whether those are appropriate or additional. Compatibility measures should be done. Uh, with, with regards to landscaping and of any other items for the outdoor track. Uh, we are, we also look at compatibility with the master plan. Uh, that in and of itself hasn't changed because, well, this is a retail, this is in, located in a retail corridor. To the east is um, single-family homes, and so it's envisioned. To have a transition, a step down in the intensity of the use from the commercial uses that are fronting at Middle Belt. Into the single-family neighborhood, uh, that's why sometimes. Though these transition areas are utilized with offices or some other. Lower level of activity that's completely indoors. So the planning mission would have to determine if this posed use would be. Compatible with the master plan, even though the fact that it's proposing a transition, not necessarily an outdoor use in this location. Uh, when it comes to uh, the open air business, there are specific requirements. The revised, the site plan has been revised uh, to deal with these requirements, uh, for, more specifically on sheet C two. Uh, there are two, a western Maplewood Avenue driveways, they've been removed, curb cuts on the Maplewood have been removed. And a curb green belt uh, in the right way has been constructed, so therefore, there's no issue with um. Access to the site and direct relation to intersections. And then um. Specifically, open air businesses are supposed to provide a ten-foot setback along uh, any right-of-way line. Now that's revised site plan does show a ten-foot landscape buffer along Middle Belt. However, it doesn't show a uh. Landscape buffer along Maplewood. So in order to comply with that standard, a uh, the parking lot layout would be, would have to be revised, provided ten-foot landscape buffer along Maplewood as well. And then beyond that, um, a minor note is needed with regard to loading and parking to ensure that all activities will be done on site. One other issue, just regards to um, compatibility. You know, a special land use uh, criteria is to make sure that any special land use will not interfere with use and enjoyment, enjoyment. Of adjacent property. In addition to the noise levels that we've already discussed, one issue um, and is the hours of operation, but the applicant has addressed that, they're gonna be from nine AM to dusk. We would just like to know if the applicant provide uh, information regarding the interior use hours of operation. And also with regards to use of adjacent property being um, not interfered with and be allowed to be enjoyed. Uh, lighting can have a significant impact on that. Uh, compatibility issue. Uh, the applicant's revised site plan does show that there are five existing security lights located along. That eastern elevation of the warehouse building. Uh, however, the details like the mounting height, if there's any shielding uh, existing, um, they haven't provided, been provided yet. So the site plan should be revised to. Uh, provide those details because to maximize the compatibility of this use with the adjacent property. Uh, really, the lighting should be, ma- made sure to be, it's shielded, directed downward, does not shine onto adjacent property. And removal of any angle parking, so that, that is a key um. Issue that affects property that's adjacent to commercial areas. Uh, when it comes to public service and utilities, as, as a matter of course, during site plan approval, if this is approved. They, the outdoor AO will have to be reviewed by, reviewed by the engineer. For the pros grade changes to make sure there's compliance with our stormwater standards. Uh, the applicant has indicated that the amount of grade change is gonna be pretty minimal, it's gonna, I think it's about three to five, three, two to three feet at maximum. But that's gonna definitely have to be considered and revised, uh, the. Not sure if we bring it up here. But he, he has indicated the type of material that the outdoor track is gonna be used, but the. Revised site plan does not show the configuration of the track, I presume that's because. Uh, it can change from time to time as the applicant, you know, provides configurations for his customers. Then, then moving on, the other, only really issue, other real issue with regards to um. Special use approval would be the enhancement of the surrounding environment, we've talked about that in terms of. Ways in which the special land use would enhance the environment. And one way that can do, that can be done is through uh, enhanced landscaping, you know, additional landscaping along the northern and southern property lines. Or other site improvements that are over and above the minimum ordinance requirements. In addition to possibly any enhancements to the existing building basades. Uh, we'll get that into that more detail um, in the site plan review, but the existing building. Long, along um. Middle Belt is a uh, concrete block building and uh, the rear building, the warehouse building is a um. Uh, you know, corrugated metal, blue metal siding building. So there's opportunities to either change the color or the material, enhance the material, or. Maybe provide a brick uh, foundation wall or, you know, something. So that's in theory could happen, that would enhance the building inside. Granted, the uh, parking space, parking lot improvements as proposed will enhance the site. Provided he complies with the minimum requirements of the ordinance provide, you know, the landscape screening, that will definitely improve the site and enhance it. So in the end. When it comes to special land use, it's compatibility is the main issue. Uh, and it would be in regards to planning commission. Whether you interpret that um. The additional, whether the revisions provided tonight are sufficient. To warrant, to consider that the use will be compatible, or whether you feel the need to uh, have other improvements. To uh, maximize compatibility. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a question.
Oh. Yeah, go ahead.
When we're looking at that ten-foot buffer. It, it makes sense, I believe, on Middle Belt. Because of the volume of, of traffic that's consistently there. But on Maplewood. I don't think that's necessary on Maplewood, something of a lesser amount, I think would be more appropriate on Maplewood. Uh, with the other parking lot improvements and the rest of the landscaping. I think Maplewood, uh, the, that ten-foot buffer number could be revised or modified.
Yeah, there's nothing possible, the plant, you, you could uh, modify that standard, um. I will say that if you did have to provide the full ten feet, it would probably would result in a uh. Removal of the five horizontal parking spaces along the building of the warehouse building. And possibly a reduction in the aisle with, or a reconfiguration of the um, parking circulation. In that northern parking lot, so it would.
That's what I'm looking at, exactly.
So it would do that, the one benefit I would say is that um, when we get into the parking details. Because uh, if, as long as he's still going to provide the parking spaces on the south of the building. And based on, and if he can provide more details on how the warehouse buildings be used. He actually would have enough parking spaces to even allow for a reduction in the northern parking lot spaces to uh, to function. Uh, granted, that's gonna be a. Push and pull of that, so. If he didn't have to provide the ten-foot, then I definitely think it would make it easier, but I, but there is some. There's still, I believe, some way that the, if anyone else wanted landscaping, it could be provided with, uh, and he could still provide. Sufficient parking for his, his customers.
The, the reason I bring that up is. If you look at the other. Um, game center, uh, I guess is. Where they play the different card games and, and all that uh, down the street. That's extremely popular, when they have events down there, they fill every last spot in their parking lot, and they have a very ample parking lot. So we have a situation here, which is kinda unique for us in Garden City. We have a site plan to look at. It has a pretty ample amount of parking for a change. And. I just don't see, it just doesn't make sense to me to take away from that. We're always having such a problem trying to add to it, I don't see a good reason to take away from it. I think. Maplewood doesn't carry anywheres near the type of traffic. That Middle Belt does. I, I would like to see the configuration uh, adjacent to Maplewood stay pretty much the same as it concerns parking. And there could maybe be. Some shrubs or, or some low plantings put in that area. But um. I, I would hate this, I think this is gonna be very popular. Uh. I know lots of people just within my own family that have these electric cars and trucks, and they just love using them. And um, I think this is gonna be a real popular uh, place. So I don't wanna see us take any parking away from it.
So you can revise that your special use um, consideration, but I will mention that Brian probably is indicating that Fred. Kinda has his hand raised, so the property owner is, isn't available right now to take any questions or answer anything you might have.
He's not available?
He is, he is.
Oh, yes, okay, well, you'll have a chance after you're done, uh, Mike, if nobody else has any.
I, I'm set, I'm good, thank you, Fred.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question for Mr. Ortega about the uh. Review so far? If not, we can uh. Ask Mr. Kenda if he'd like to uh, comment on his uh. Proposal.
Uh, yes, folks, uh, assuming you can hear me, I hope.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Very good. Steenberg, just wanted to let you know, uh, the gaming center that you spoke of. I was the original creator of that in the eighteen fifty-eight building. And subsequent owner moved to that newer building, so, yeah, it was very, very popular, all. And subsequent owner moved to that newer building, so yeah, it was very, very popular, although. This type of uh application that I'm proposing here would have far less people. Uh he he has tournaments that are enormous. And uh that was an issue uh and why he had to move to a larger building. But uh neither here nor there uh to comment on the maple wood uh landscaping. And the ten foot setback, that green belt that's there is basically a twelve foot green belt between uh maple wood and our parking lot. Uh and it would be a hardship to remove that ten feet. Uh I agree wholeheartedly. Uh because presently, I don't have plans, uh as they were taken away from the site plan, to uh pave. The other area uh to the south, the other parking lot at this moment in time. Uh so I was hoping to be able to make do with the parking lot as we have now. And in as far as landscape, there are just a couple of points I wanted to address if you don't mind. In as far as landscape details are. The specific goals of the heights of plants and things of that sort obviously would have to comply with uh the code. The problem is is not knowing when this is actually going to be able to be put into motion. Uh we left that information off simply because complies with code tells the story. We can't do anything other than what the code requires. The uh in as far as the hours of the retail operation are concerned. I mean, it it is a retail operation. Our existing store, which would be moved to this location, maintains out no later than eight PM. Uh there would be absolutely, I quite honestly, I hadn't thought to address it on the site plan, simply because. It would be standard retail hours uh and I, if I'm not mistaken, I thought there were ordinances in as far as. Retail hours in in Garden City and limitations, and we would be within those uh without any doubt. Uh the grade and the height of the uh track in the back, now mind you, it is a dirt track, so it is just. What's already there, basically dirt. And the maximum height of the uh banks uh would be, I can't even envision them being three feet, but I say two to three feet, just. So that I'm I'm clear, so to speak. And the track design has to uh accommodate drainage. So there has to be a, not quite a pond per se, but a place where any water from this track can drain to the interior track. Not to the adjacent properties. Uh the entire thing, if you could envision uh kind of like a a cone, so to speak, the the highest points would be to the outside. And the lowest points would be to the inside. Uh that's necessary for this type of track. Uh it has to be able to drain somewhere and draining to the interior where there's a little pond is the best way to do it, so to speak.
Well, that that's actually the kind of information that we need on the site plan.
Understood. There. In the last meeting, there we did, it wasn't mentioned uh in as far as having the details of the uh the drainage, but that's not an issue. We can. Supply that information and and if a statement is enough, then we'll be happy to make the statement. Otherwise, we can do whatever is necessary. I did wanna just make one comment in as far as enhancement of the areas concerned. You know, folks, we have to remember this building was i- has been dilapidated and horrible for so many years. Uh basically, when it was being cleaned out, it it was a toxic waste dump for God's sakes. And you know, the fact that we're trying to put it back into use, uh you know, to a productive, nice, clean use. I think is an enhancement in and of itself. Neither here nor there, I appreciate the time to be able to to give this information. Uh if anyone has any questions, additional questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, we'll uh we'll come back to you later when we have uh more questions about the site plan review, I'm sure. But in the meantime, uh dealing with the special land use. There's some issues that I see with the uh. With what's before us now. The first one is that the screening wall is not complete because it doesn't screen. All of the residentially zoned property to the south and east. Secondly, the uh. There's no landscape plan, and you've already mentioned that you didn't do that, but we we do need to see. A plan before we can approve it. And we would like a note on on the plan also. Because we're concerned about sound levels, that you're only going to be allowing electric cars and that you understand that the. The sound level limits are fifty five dB. So that's that's some of the things that, and as far as uh the screening wall itself and the fencing, we would like to see some details about what. The appearance of that wall and the fencing is going to be. Moving on down the review. Section B, we need to basically mitigate the impact of the intensive outdoor use. Because of the adjacent residential district and having the the screening wall. Is a major part of that, as well as the sound control and as we'll talk later about the lighting. Uh you did remove the two most western curb cuts on uh. On the site plan, and that's a good thing. Uh the ten foot landscape buffer, I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to rewrite the code to uh. I don't know that we have the authority to modify that, but. We need to see if we did. What kind of landscaping we could put in in that area, possibly not completely um. Reducing the the ten foot to what it is now, but to. Have an adequate amount, possibly a little bit less than ten foot and still maintain your parking. I I would also appreciate a note on your plan because of the parking, that there will be no customer parking on maple wood. Next, the the hours of operation should be noted on your plan and the lighting. We we need some details about the lighting, the outdoor lighting. Because it needs to be directed down and shielded, so it's not adversely affecting adjacent property. Does anyone else have any comments about the uh? Special land use application?
I have a question regarding the drones. Is there gonna be an area outside for these drones or the drones? Are you, they're gonna be flying over there or no, or is that just inside or selling them?
Uh this facility only deals with uh radio controlled cars.
Okay.
Drone activity would be mini drones that would be flown indoors. Uh there would be nothing outdoors for drone whatsoever.
Thank you.
Uh quick question. How many were addressed from the last time we visited this? Did we list them and present them to Fred?
Um we did. I'm sorry, Fred, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, do we have that list and is it, is it available for us to check off the things that we already listed? Seems like we're we're revisiting the same things over again.
Yeah, I agree. We're talking about some of the same things because some of them haven't been addressed on the site plan as yet.
They they, that's why we talked about them the first time. We wanted them addressed on the site plan.
We have the memorandum. You look in your pack. That states some of the things we had, we had concerns about previously.
And the minutes from the uh the original meeting do have um a summary of some of those items, so I believe in that. Initial meeting, you indicated uh attempting to address issues raised in my letter in addition to the specific ones you mentioned and recorded in the minutes. And he's addressed them to a certain degree, I I think, um and he's providing some additional information right now, but yes, some of the other information. Uh hasn't been uh all the details of that proposed information have not been provided.
Okay, one one question I have, uh you said you're not going to pave the other parking lot now uh. So you're depending on on the use. Of this parking lot for your total parking, uh but we don't, we don't really know yet. What the occupancy load of the building is going to be because we don't have. And this is really gonna come up later in the site plan too, but we don't have a floor plan to tell us. Give us an idea of how many people will be occupying the building. Uh we don't know where customers will be allowed and where storage will be. And basically, we have no idea what's going on inside the building, so we don't know how many people are gonna be there, so it's pretty hard to tell. How much parking is required.
Uh Mr. Chair, I will say that the original application did have a floor plan. It wasn't included with these. But you're right in terms of it's not complete for the warehouse structure because. As I mentioned, the revised site plan that you have in front of you does show um. A note that the warehouse structure will be for basically warehouse and then future track. So and and um that will definitely impact how that's used right now based on. Perhaps he's if he's phasing in basically the second parking lot, you're absolutely right, it will in the, how that blue structure gets utilized will impact whether. Enough parking spaces are provided on the north side. I will say it'd be pretty close because on uh, and I know we're getting into site plan issues, but. I'll describe that in more detail and 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 the site plan requirements, but yeah, it's 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 gonna be very close, depending on.
Okay, well, we'll, yeah, we'll revisit the parking when we get to the site plan, but. As far as I can see. Some of the deficiencies for the uh. Special land use are the incomplete screening wall. Uh no landscape plan. And we need some notes on the plan stating that electric cars only. And. Basically, uh we need to just mitigate the uh the impact of this intensive use outside. The landscape buffer uh. We're going to have to look at because I I believe uh we don't have the authority to. Ignore that section of the code. And uh we do need a landscaping plan to go along with that. And I'd like the uh the lighting. Uh to be uh. To be addressed. And the uh hours of operation to be noted on the site plan. Though these are all things that I believe need to be done to the site plan before. We can recommend approval of it. Before we, before we make a motion on that, why don't we go ahead and uh. Look at the site plan review, Mr. Ortega, would you go over that, please?
Uh yes, um to get into the details with regards to site plan. The the existing structures do meet our setback requirements as before. Uh when it comes to the building design, uh no building elevations have been provided. Uh so we're not sure exactly how the final uh colors and materials would be on the on the existing structure. Um currently, the the front uh, the building with frontage on maple on middle belt. Uh is gray concrete, concrete block. Um so revise elevate, providing elevations indicating a minimum of colors and materials be uh required. Um and then getting into the details of parking. We we have the issues with the screening that that might could. Uh if needed to be provided on private property, it will significantly alter the, well, it will alter the configuration on the north side. If it was to be provided at a minimum on the south side parking lot. Whether it's constructed initially or in a in a future phase, there is a required ten foot parking, ten foot, excuse me, ten foot landscape screening. On middle belt on that south parking lot. In the end, it'll only result in the in the removal of two parking spaces. But that is uh necessary on a, to be included on a revised plan. And then when it comes to uh the minimum parking space requirement, probably the most significant issue is the fact that the outdoor space originally. We were utilizing the entire configuration and on the revised site plan, he is indicating that there is gonna be a four thousand square foot pit area, basically. Of that entire rear outdoor yard, majority of it is gonna be just track in which uh participants and. Visitors won't be able to, you know, go on to. You know, all the time, and it's gonna be uh a four thousand square foot area where only the uh participants will be located, so with that number provided. It's altered the uh number of spaces required. He would be required to provide twenty parking spaces for that uh pit area. And so um. Based on. The updated information, uh when you look at the retail use. And the office uses uh in the indoor track and the existing front structures and then the um. The uh open air business configuration with a pit area, he needs to provide uh at a minimum. Uh thirty four parking spaces. And that northern parking lot in its current configuration provides forty. So in theory, there's six parking spaces to play with in terms of. Uh once again, how that blue warehouse building is gonna be used. If it's all warehouse, that configuration is very minimal. I think it's one parking space for twelve hundred square feet, maybe. But if he wants to have that designated as an indoor track area and he provided another um pit area. So instead of utilizing the full sixteen sixteen thousand square feet, he had another reduced pit area. In theory, it could. Meet the requirements in the north, but once again, that detailed information needs to be provided. It's not. It's not capable of um being accurately determined with the information provided. One other issue with regard to parking. He's talked about, you know, applicants talked about the future designation uh configuration of the southern parking lot. There was the note last time about whether it's gonna be a dual use. Parking for passenger vehicles and an outdoor track. You know, depending on how frequent that outdoor asphalt track is being used, that would impact um. Whether that those parking spaces could be, you know, counted as meeting the parking requirements, so I think that question is. Whether the asphalt outdoor track is gonna be. How frequent it's gonna be used would be important because he could do it as a temporary use, a temporary thing that occurs. You know, two or three times a year, that's something that we do allow businesses to do, have a temporary event on their property. And at that time of application, then we deal with the parking issues to make sure it's appropriate. So parking is a big issue with regard to site plan, and then as we've talked about uh with regard to special use, the details of the lighting will be important to have on revised site plan, the details of the landscaping. The revised plan does show a five foot wide concrete sidewalk along maple wood, which would be, will be great because it'll provide a significant um. Uh missing component of our our sidewalk pattern. And then uh with regards to the site planning, does need to provide detailed drawings, uh excuse me, detailed. Uh elevation drawings for the dumpster to make sure the enclosure is composed of uh compatible material and it's. And it's, uh, provides the, um, you know, the baller, it's the, the metal gate and the hard surface underneath, so that uh, dumpster enclosure details needs to be provided. So that's the information that would be, uh, still be required on a revised site plan.
Uh, Mr. Canada, do you have any comment?
Quite honestly, not sure what to comment, uh, Commissioner. Uh, we I thought addressed all the issues that uh, were required of us that were mentioned in the last meeting and that were, uh, sent in the communications, but apparently, uh, not. So again, I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to drop this outdoor plan and simply consider constructing, uh, just a large building, uh, in the rear to occupy that space. It, it may be a simpler concept uh, than, uh, than what we're trying to do here.
Well, even if you did that, you're still going to have to comply with some of the other requirements that we're talking about.
No, I agree wholeheartedly. It's just, it's, it wouldn't require special use though, which seems to be the sticking point.
Well, your site plan is still a sticking point because there's a lot of unresolved issues on the site plan that need to be uh, filled in before we can approve it, I believe.
Uh, it's unfortunate because we provided this plan on January first. Uh, and I had no, no feedback, uh, regarding the revisions or anything else that might be necessary. Uh, had we had them, we could have addressed those issues. Uh, unfortunately, I received the review today in my email. So I, uh, obviously we had no time to prepare for any of this, so I apologize for being unprepared.
Possibly part of the reason with the feedback may have been, uh, that the item has been tabled up until today.
Well, it's been tabled for our action up until today. But, uh, yeah, we, we haven't. I believe we have met since, since our last meeting that you were at, but your, your, uh, proposal wasn't on, on our agenda at, at our last meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, one thing, uh, that involved, um, extending this review was the fact that this is still located in the DDA. And the DDA wanted to have an opportunity to comment on it, so their meeting, uh, you know, occurs, um, the Tuesday after our meetings. So his, the version of his plan that you have in front of you was provided to the DDA so they could take a look, provide their comments and opinions. And they did provide, uh, a note of support and, uh, that you, it was emailed to you. And so from that, that version of the plan, you know, if I provided a review letter and then made revisions, if the applicant provides revisions to you, then, uh, then the, then what you would have in your pack, it would be a revised plan without my, my opportunity to comment on the second revision. So as a matter, you know, the, as most communities do, we choose to have the version in front of you in my review letter, comment on that version. So it, it does, between that and the, uh, the need to have that, need to give the opportunity of the, for the DDA to respond, that's why sometimes he's, he's, um, getting him in front of you, it takes about a month, basically.
Yeah, that's understandable. I'm, I'm sorry that, uh, things can't move a little faster when that sometimes we would like them to, but we, we do have to allow everybody to, uh, conduct their reviews and, uh, and make comments. But, uh, I know you're, uh, you're anxious to, to move ahead with your project and we would like to, uh, move ahead with you, but we need to get all of the details we need to make our determination. So basically, we, we need all that information that's on the review. And if you would like to, uh, get that back to, uh, Mr. Ortega. I'm sure he'll, uh, expedite it as soon as he can and, uh, get it back in front of us, but I don't believe that we can do anything with it at this time. Uh, other than table it and wait for more information. But I would like, uh, to hear from the rest of the commission to see what they think. So does anyone else have comment?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, everybody's good with waiting for the, uh, updated review or the updated information?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think we need a, uh, a motion then to table both the special land use and the, uh, the site plan review until Mr. Canada can get updated information back to us.
Uh, Commissioner, if I could please just request if it's possible to get a specific list of exactly what we need to address. Um, that way I can ensure that it's being addressed properly by the architect who's handling this. Uh, and the other question is going to be that, uh, green belt, uh, area, that landscape area along Maplewood. Uh, you know, if I'm not mistaken, earlier in the meeting, I thought there was a discussion uh, of a plan along Inkster where that green belt wasn't feasible or it was a hardship. I was just curious what the difference was, if perhaps somebody could let me know.
Well, they already have a setback on Inkster. They just don't have any green belt in it. And that's, that's the difference.
And actually, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, one, one other thing is specifically for open air businesses, there is a specific zoning ordinance requirement for the ten foot landscape buffer, whereas other commercial properties in the city. The landscape buffer is under your general landscape ordinance and the landscape ordinance uh, section does a little, give the planning commission, uh, latitude. But the issue we were confronted here is that there's under section. I can provide, provide section, but you know, under, under the section specifically, we give our open air businesses, there's that parking setback requirement.
And there's no consideration of the green belt area that exists, a twelve foot green belt area that's already there in existence?
Uh, I can check, but I believe the, uh, ordinance would state that the, the buffer, the required buffer it's asking for in the ordinance has to be provided on private property. But, you know, that's something that can be looked at.
Because I, I'm not sure about that either. I'm not, I, I believe that it just said a ten foot setback, but I'm not sure where that setback has to come from. So if you could double check on that, uh, that would be good.
Because it's true. I'm sorry, Fred, uh, just so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, there is, there would be a buffer between the actual property, I'm sorry, between the parking lot or the edge of the utilized, uh, property and the sidewalk, uh, that would be uh, I, it's hard to see on the plan, if I'm not mistaken.
That's another, that's another thing. There's no dimensions on your plan, so it's a little hard for us to pick those details out.
Uh, but Mr. Canada, you know, you're, you're right, is that in theory in Inkster, on the, the other case before us tonight, the issue where you're facing with is we're dealing with Wayne County and their jurisdiction. This is Maplewood, so this is a local road, so the city does have that authority. So if we wanted to, if you wanted to have something to that effect inside the right of way, uh, and not on the private property. The issue, the, the thing you're gonna be confronted with is that in the zoning ordinance specifically, one fifty-four dot one forty-nine, paragraph C, parking shall be set back a minimum of ten feet from any road right of way line. So the road, it has to be measured ten foot from the road right of way line, so the most concrete, um, waiver from that standard would be a variance from the ZBA. You know, I think I'd have to hunt the, I'd have to review the zoning ordinance further to see if, to answer, uh, Mr., uh, the chairman May's question of whether the planning commission has the authority to waive that as part of special use or if it, or variance would be required. But having a design option of putting landscaping in the right of way, you know, is something that could be, uh, I guess, part of an application with regards to either a special use waiver or a ZBA variance. So it's possible.
Yeah, if you could, uh, look on that, look into that to let us know ahead of time possibly before we get to our, our next meeting. So we have an idea of where, where we stand.
Absolutely. And then working in concert with Brian, I can provide, uh, uh, Fred, the, uh, Mr. Canada, not Mr. May, the chair. Mr. Canada, the, uh, detailed list of, uh, what we've discussed tonight in addition to highlighting in my review letter, um, those same, uh, details, so he can have a, a detailed list for his architect.
Well, that would be great. Well, Mr. Canada, you'll be getting that information, uh, in short order as far as the the information you need to update your site plan. And, uh, I look forward to having this back, uh, before us so we can resolve some of these issues. But in the meantime, I think we need to, uh, table it, table both items and, uh, come back when, when you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Commissioners, for your time. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to table? We need, for both items?
Before we make a motion, uh, Fred, before we make a motion to, uh, table, could we make the offer of the possibility of a special meeting? If, if, uh, Mr. Canada is able to get the, uh, information we request in, in a sooner fashion than our next normally scheduled meeting?
Well, by the time he gets it and we have a chance to review it, I don't know if it's if it could be much sooner than our next regular meeting. Uh, what do you think, Mr. Ortega?
It's possible, I guess, depending on how quick the turnaround is from his architect, the only issue that might, uh, involve that schedule would be, um, allowing the DDA to, um, have comments on this because their their next meeting is next Tuesday. I don't know. Given the fact they're su- supportive of the project, I don't know if they would, um,
I don't think they'd wanna hold it up just so they could comment on, on, on these details.
Right.
Well, maybe if, maybe you could, uh, contact me if we get this all together in a timely manner so that, um, you know, if it's, if it's gonna be more than a couple of weeks that we can cut off, we might be able to have a special meeting for that. We could call one if, if things come together.
Sure. That, that's all I was looking at. I, I thought we would make the offer to the candidate. We don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but I, I thought if
Well.
everybody else was interested, we'd make the offer.
Yeah, that's a possibility, but, uh, both sides have to have an opportunity to make the corrections and do the reviews, so if we can, if we can get it together in a timely fashion and I mean, if, if we're only gonna save a week, I don't think it makes sense to have a special meeting, but if we can get it a couple of weeks or even sooner, then, uh, it would be worthwhile in my opinion and, uh, we could, we could call a meeting at that time, I believe.
Alrighty.
Uh, Mr. Ortega, does that sound good to you?
Uh, yeah, uh, depending on when I receive the, uh, um, revisions, yeah, I can look into that and see. So I'll provide, uh, Mr. Canada, the, the revised notes, um, if not tomorrow, first thing Monday.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table this, uh, until we get the required information on a site plan that we can further review.
Support. Okay, uh, motions made and supported to table the site plan. Uh, would you take the role? Brian?
Hang on, okay, now that I'm off mute, Commissioner Steenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Mativier?
Hi.
Commissioner, uh, Kalitas?
Hi.
Mr. Turnbull?
Hi.
Your person may.
Hi, we also need a motion to table the, uh, special land use.
Motion to table the special land use.
Motion's made and supported to table the special land use recommendation. Uh, would Secretary take the role, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Hi.
Mr. Kalitas?
Hi.
Mr. Mativier?
Hi.
Mr. Steenberg?
Hi.
Your person may.
Hi. Hey, Mr. Canada, uh, when you can get that back to us, we'll, uh, take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next next order of business is other business and discussion. Any one have any other business?
Uh, yes. I asked, uh, previously about the uh, site plan for McDonald's if there was a bench around the sign that's diagonally located on the corner of Middle Belt and Ford Road. To my recollection, that was to have a bench on either side of it.
Uh, that's a good point. I can check that out. I, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I can check that out.
Has anything been done about signage for, uh, right turn only coming out on Ford Road?
Uh, I'm looking into it with, uh, with the app, is it, yeah, they definitely need to provide something because there's a lot. I know that's a constant issue, not only with that site with, uh, with, uh, checker site as well.
Yeah, they have an issue too. Any other, uh, discussion, any other business?
Nothing here, nothing.
Question for Mario.
Mario, do you have something?
I think there's Mr. Turnbull. He had a question for me.
Yes. Mario, did we have a, a solid head count for that, uh, for the, uh, business that's, uh, fine for special land use on the corner of Maplewood? Um, did we have a solid head count for parking spaces? It seemed like that was up in the air a little bit. Which way it was going to go?
That's why we need a floor plan.
Right, we needed a floor plan, we needed a head count, and we needed lighting cut sheets for a parking lot that we have not got a number for yet.
Correct, uh, the, the revised information provided some more, but not everything we needed because we now know how much the outdoor track would need in terms of parking, but that blue warehouse building. You know, if it was just a warehouse and stayed in warehouse in perpetuity, then, uh, in theory, he might have enough parking. But if he says a future race course, you know, we'd have to know that floor plan configuration inside the blue warehouse.
Right.
You know, one issue is that his submittal, um, didn't include the floor. You know, one issue is that his submittal didn't include the floor plans of the original submittal. Um, which did did have the details for um. The retail store, the office space and the indoor track, little indoor track in that front building. Uh, and those are the numbers I used my site plan review. I gave him the benefit of the doubt that configuration remained the same. So the really the one thing we'll need, and I'll make sure to include in my notes to him that have. A complete package submittal, including all elevations and floor plans that he submitted previously. That are still relevant for him. And then the details you guys indicated tonight and it was in my letter specifically a floor plan for that blue warehouse.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ortega, you have anything?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Brian?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay, uh, next regular meeting, Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Alrighty.
Thank everyone for participating and uh. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Part.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye, aye, aye.